Again, everyone, welcome to the Romeo Planning Commission meeting for April 6, 2023. We begin our meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance. If everyone stands.
A pledge of allegiance.
... by the United States of America, and we do the Republic where we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, Lisa is going to be handling the minutes. You want to do roll call?
Yes, please.
Mr. Hale is absent and excused for this evening. Janice Fowler?
Here.
Bill Grandstaff?
Here.
Mr. Minton is absent. Mr. Parker, Bill Parker?
Yes.
Justin Parker?
Yes.
Carl Webb?
Yes.
I am present. Mr. Stegner?
Yes.
We have a, we have a quorum.
Okay, we move on to, does anybody have, I hope, trust everyone's looked at the agenda for tonight. Anybody have anything to add to tonight's agenda? No, so I'm going to make a motion that we approve tonight's agenda?
Support.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous, okay. Approval of, we move on to approval of the meeting minutes for March six, or sixth, second?
Mr. President?
Yes.
Are you?
Chairman.
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah.
I am sorry. I can't see your. Hey, Jim. Don't we have to do the public hearing?
That's next.
I thought public hearing happened before our meeting.
Ah, yes, it doesn't. I'm sorry for that. So, we have to, how can I do this officially, Lisa?
We could close our meeting.
We can, yeah.
Or suspend it.
Should we just close the meeting temporarily?
Just suspend it.
Yeah, okay, let's just, okay. So, we're gonna-
We shouldn't support for that.
You can if you want to.
Make a motion to suspend the meeting.
Support.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, so, at this point, we will begin a public hearing on, boy, I really missed me, on 122 South Rawls, an application for special land use. Anybody who has a comment to make about that special land use may do so now. Commission members may not comment at this point.
I'd like to make a comment that I have been owning that building for almost forty years, maybe forty years.
Okay, would you?
Can you step to the podium so we can hear? Thank you.
Yeah. I'm Dale Wells, the owner of the property. I've owned it for maybe forty years, and I've had medical-type business in there for the whole time, and I'm really kind of appalled that I had to go through the process, and they couldn't tell me when this ordinance was added, and it should have been just a non-conforming use if it wasn't. Plus, you set a precedent putting up a dental practice on Van Dyke, and I'm not even on Van Dyke. So, I'm really kind of confused why I had to spend a thousand dollars and come here today for a doctor moving into my building, you know? So, I did make the application because they told the doctor she couldn't practice, and so that's, that's my comment. But, we're here, here to get it approved, and I did pay the thousand dollars under protest. And if you have the ability to refund that, give the, the village the order for that. I pay enough in taxes here, so don't need to be paying extra taxes. Any, any questions you have to make?
Any other comments or questions? Okay, well, then, I guess we will go back to our regular meeting.
Close the public hearing?
Close, close the-
Oh, you don't, you don't decide on it?
Not at this, but I don't think that that's, we can, we certainly can't decide on any monies that exchange hand.
Do you decide?
And we are going to, yes, within the confines of our regular meeting, we're going to talk about, talk about special land use. All right, so, somebody make a motion to re, reopen the meeting?
Well, sure.
Okay, Bill?
I made a motion that we reopen the regular meeting.
All right, I'll second that. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, so, now, approval of the minutes from March 2nd? Okay.
Support.
All right, so, motion is to approve the minutes from March 2nd. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. So, now, we move on to the public forum, which we have at every meeting. If you have any questions or comments about things going on in the village pertaining to the commission business, you're welcome to make a comment now. And I don't see any, okay.
Good evening. My name is Richard Corey. I live at 322 Chandler, which is right next to the middle school that they, that they tore down a couple of years ago. That's the reason I'm here. This week, I organized a meeting of residents that live on Prospect and Chandler by hand walking about forty-five flyers around. I also invited the village council, and I also invited the school board. So, last Tuesday night, we met right here in this room. About thirty-five residents showed up. It was very informal, and I informed them that the school had received five site plans for seventeen homes on the four-acre property. And they, as of right now, they have chosen three that they're going to give consideration to. I did speak with one school official who told me that now, now the school board has options. They can either accept any of the bids or reject them all. So, our group also formed a subcommittee, and we're going to write a letter to the school board asking them if we can talk to their consultant, because their consultant, one of the school board members told me that the consultant had been talking to residents. So, that, that's, for us, that's positive. So, we wanted to, we wanted to meet with the consultant before they made a big decision, because we're the people that live right around it. And I did ask the thirty-five people that were here, mostly from Prospect and Chandler and Church Street, if, if the consultant had spoken with any of those yet, and, and they hadn't. So, we're just going to take that as a positive, that we're going to try to talk to the consultant. So, we're going to ask the school board if we can do that before they make their final decision. And we also wanted them to address Section 46-154 of your, of your code, your building code, because in there it says, "Single-family dwellings shall be aesthetically compatible in design and appearance with other residents in that vicinity." So, on the north or on the west side, where Dale lives, there's, there's three houses. There's just three houses that face the old school. And on the other side, the Prospect side, I'm thinking there's six. So, six and three is nine. So, anyways, we wanted, we wanted to ask them how their developer is going to address that concern that the residents will have. But, I can imagine that's probably going to end up right here someday, probably, because you're the planning commission. I'm hoping to get the letter in the packet, the school board packet, by the end of April. So, I, what I, what I've done, I've started collecting email addresses, so it's a lot easier than me walking around town, you know, passing out flyers. So, I would like, I like to keep you guys in the loop, so I can probably get all your emails off the website, correct? And, and I know Karen is, is a new planner here, and, you know, if she can add anything or can help us as a group, that would be great. So, I just plan on keeping everybody in the loop, staying positive, try to, because, you know, we, I mean, we're not, we're not type of group that's going to go in there and say, you know, you know, with our pitchforks and demand something. We're not, because we understand, the ordinance says you can put seventeen houses there. We're just looking for a compromise. So, you'll be probably getting an email from me, and I'll let you know what we're doing, okay? Okay, thanks.
Go ahead.
Okay, my name's Tom Ridley. I live at 307 Chandler. I'm one of the three houses facing the school. And I'd have to thank Dale, or Richard Corey. I have to thank Richard Corey for organizing a meeting of the residents in the local area on Tuesday night. I have seen the school superintendent regularly in town and asked him how things were going. Always very upbeat, and things were moving ahead. But, I can tell you that there's never been any outreach from the school to any of the residents about what they plan to do. And when I went to this meeting on Tuesday night, I find out they want to put seventeen homes there. The only way they're going to put seventeen homes there is to make it look like Washington, with their little townhouses that are just, you know, cookie cutters, one right after the other. I don't see how any, that in any way can be compatible to what's in, existing in that neighborhood. I was also told that the school has, or has put out in their RFP that that's the number they're expecting, seventeen. And I'm not sure I understand that. First of all, this is the first time I have ever been in front of a planning committee. Isn't that your job, to decide how many units can be built on a piece of property? How can somebody who's selling a piece of property dictate, after that property is sold, what you do with it? It has to be up to the local community, which I understand is the planning board. So, I'm, I'm thinking that they're dictating to you what they, some developer can do with that property, and I think that should be yours. Now, there was a question at the meeting on Tuesday night, how many of these local residents, thirty-five, remember it, and these are all right here, would like to see that as left as an open space? I could, for me, I thought it was a unanimous decision. I've also talked with Megan Poznanski. She said she'd like to see it as an open space. The big surprise to me was that piece of property is supposed to be worth $400,000. That doesn't seem like a lot of money to me. I mean, can we do a millage issue? That's what, a hundred dollars per family in Romeo? It seems like it to me. I don't, I think this should be something that's thought about and discussed, because we've got this opportunity that will be lost, and the last thing I want to see is having, you know, all of these houses shoved down our throat. I've also just heard that one of the goals of the school is to try and increase as many families as they can in the school district. That may be their plan, but it's not my plan. And I cannot believe that their charter is, includes dictating how the community is built and developed. They've got enough to do trying to educate the kids, and I know that's, that's a full-time job. Their job isn't to tell us what we have in our neighborhood. That's all I've got. I thank you very much for your time.
All right, thanks. Any other business people would like to bring up? All right, we move on from public forum to special land use review from Ms. LeVar, our, excuse me, village planner.
So, tonight, the planning commission is considering the special land use review at 122 South Rawls Street. This property is located in the CBD district, and the request is medical office use for the entire building. The applicant is requesting to utilize the entire building as a medical office. Medical offices are special land use in the CBD district when they are located on the ground floor. The special land use is reviewed by the planning commission individually. As to its appropriateness, it must find affirmatively, it must find affirmatively to each of the following standards of the proposed land use. Petitioners should submit written documentation of the site plan which responds to each of these eight standards. This is found in Section 46-653 of the zoning ordinance. Standard number one, the proposed special land use shall be of such location, size, and character that it will be in harmony with the appropriate and orderly development of the surrounding neighborhood and our vicinity, and applicable to regulations of the zoning district in which it is located. The structure is existing, meeting the current standards of the CBD district, and does not appear to be requesting any building modifications at this time. Item number two, the proposed, the proposed use shall be of a nature that will make vehicular and pedestrian traffic no more hazardous than is normal for the district involved, taking into consideration vehicular turning movements in relation to routes of traffic flow, proximity, and relationships to intersects, intersections, adequacy of site distances, location, and access of off-street parking, and provisions for pedestrian traffic, with particular attention to minimizing child vehicle interfacing. The existing site allows for twenty off-street parking spaces. Item number three, the proposed use shall be designed as to the location, size, intensity, site layout, and periods of operation of any such proposed use to eliminate any possible nuisance emanating therefrom, which might be noxious to the occupants of any other nearby permitted uses, whether by reason of dust, noise, fumes, vibrations, smoke, or lights. The applicant will need to confirm that the standard is met. Item number four, the proposed use shall be such that a proposed location in height of buildings or structures and location, nature, and height of walls, fences, and landscaping will not interfere or discourage the appropriate development and use of adjacent land and buildings, or unreasonably affect their value. The applicant will need to confirm that the standard is met. The proposed use shall relate harmoniously with the physical and economic aspects of adjacent land uses as regard to prevailing shopping habits, convenience of access by prospective patrons, continuity of development, and need for particular services and facilities in specific areas of the village. Medical offices, medical office use would likely have a similar impact on the site as its current office commercial use designation. Item number six, the proposed use is necessary for the public convenience at the proposed education. The applicant will need to confirm this standard is met. Item number seven, the proposed use is so designed, located, planned, and to be operated that the public health, safety, and welfare will be protected. The applicant will need to confirm that the standard is met. Item number eight, the proposed use shall not be detrimental or injurious to the neighborhood within which it is to be located, nor such, such use operate as a deterrent for future land uses permitted within the zoning district, and it shall be in harmony with the general purpose and intent of this chapter. The applicant will need to confirm that the standard is met. Upon the applicant confirming that the request meets all the standards above, it appears that the special land use will meet the criteria of the ordinance. The planning commission can act in one of the following ways. The planning commission may approve the request. The planning commission may approve with conditions. The planning commission may deny the request if it is determined that the particular land use requested does not meet the standards of this chapter, or the planning commission may postpone action if more information will be needed to make a decision.
Comments or questions from the commission?
I do have a question. How many years has that building been used as office? I was gonna say, it's long, long as I can remember that it's, right? Is it currently occupied at all, or it's vacant?
No, it's almost full.
Okay.
It's almost full. I think I have two small, two-hundred-square-foot units that are available.
Okay.
So, that's probably ninety percent, eighty percent.
Okay, that's currently being used as office?
Well, no, it's currently being used for the same, you know, there's the heart, excuse me, I-
Bellton.
Yes.
Bellton?
Bellton, that's it, here, here, here. Then, we've got the doctor that's in there, and then we have a massage therapist. There's been a massage therapist, one of the first tenants I put in that building, was a massage therapist that was in Tyra's building, moved into my building forty years ago. And, let's see, what else is, but the point is, is I don't want to have to come back here every time I get a tenant. We already went through this, when I had a chiropractor in there for thirty years plus. And I just don't know why I'm, why I'm here again, you know? So.
So, Ms. LeVar, now, normally, when we have a special land use request, will somebody, me, will read these review standards, and we vote on each one?
Okay, I'm sorry. I was, I was wondering how you-
No, that's all right, that's fine. There's no reason people can't hear it. But, my question for you is, applicant will need to confirm this standard is met. So, through the site plan, or by answering these questions?
Typically, by answering questions. It could be verbal answer, if you prefer something in writing. But, typical in the special land use process, the applicant needs to confirm, like, yes, there's not going to be any of these notices, or yes, we will need this, I, you know?
Yes, because normally, the applicant will submit a piece of paper with all of these review standards, and then answer each one. Have you, you haven't done that?
Let me ask you this question. Why doesn't the planner give their opinion? Because the building's been there for forty years doing it. Now, this is being applied to it. It's kind of ask the question, I'll give you the best answer I can, or, you know, tell me how your feelings are about how the building's being run with this medical in there. You know, I mean, I, it's, that, I've been around this game for a little while. That, all those rules are for a new building, you know, a new construction. Now, you've applied it to special land use. And I would question, did the orthodontist go through all of that when he was, what, when it fifteen years ago, or how long he's been there?
Mr. Wells, have you, have you had to come before the planning, before to ask for special land use?
I don't think so, because I think it was before you had the ordinance. I couldn't even find out when the ordinance was established at the village office. I asked the president, when did you start this? You know, I should be in there. If you did, I don't remember that I ever came to. I've been here many times over the years, but-
If and when special land use is granted, does that then stay with that property, so this wouldn't have to happen again?
So, if it was special land use, and it was granted, it should stay with the property. If it was a medical office prior to the adoption, then it would be considered a non-conforming use, which could continue that same use.
So, there's been medical use in there?
Yeah.
I'm not even sure why he's here.
Yeah.
I just received-
I, I understand that. I mean, it's just, perhaps there was an administrative, the, the, the building was built about nineteen forty-nine as a bowling alley, and then when the hotel was torn down, they added the bar, and it was that way, gradually falling into disrepair until Dale bought it. And he's quite correct about it, having been an office building for lowly as many years. And there have been medical people in and out. Do we need to make a motion on this thing?
Well, I don't, I mean, I was just going to say, I don't see how the use of the building has fundamentally changed.
It hasn't.
And I wonder why I-
Jim, why don't we, we make sure that it's written down so that somebody knows it, and therefore, I'd make a motion that we grant the special land use for the entire building?
We have to go through a procedure before you just grant it. And, but I want to ask Lisa, or, whoops, I'm sorry, Ms. LeVar, sorry. Am I right about that? I mean, I don't see that the usage is changing in any way, you know, and so, what's going on?
So, there's been medical offices in there since this was established, since 2000?
Is there a chiropractor? Oh, that was established in 2000.
This was established in 2000, right. This was established in 2000. So, if there was medical offices there, because they changed the ordinance, he would still be, if there was existing uses there, they would continue, they would be able to continue to operate.
Correct.
Right. Right. Right.
Right, so it would, it would continue to operate under the, I mean, if you took everything out of there, and there was no medical offices in there for a period of time, then-
It's been ongoing for all the years I've had it. The first tenant that went in there was a massage therapist, okay, thirty-five years ago. I mean, that's the, one of the criteria. Then, thirty-plus years ago, was a chiropractor, and it's just, okay, I, you tend to agree with me, so it seems like-
What other medical uses other than a chiropractor?
The hearing eye.
Okay.
There's two massage therapists in there now. They were working together, and they need more space, so they split apart. Now, they have two, two separate, small room, two rooms each. And, and then the doctor in the front, which is a, really an interesting approach. She's an MD, and it gives an alternative to having the full medical cost. And so, I don't really understand how it works, but it's a new wave that's coming for more affordable healthcare. And it's in addition to your Medicare, Medicaid, that you can go in and see a doctor with a lower monthly rate. But, it's, it's really something good for our community with the aging of the village and so on. She's, and she's a quite capable lady.
Is she, is she the one that?
Yeah, this is what it's all about. She had a ribbon cutting, and when the president or somebody from the village went, well, you don't have a right to be here, don't you see any patients? What?
So, Mr. Stegner, I would, I would refer back to Karen, she's the, she's our planner, she's a professional.
And, so.
In my opinion, it sounds like this is a nonconforming use. This is the first time I've.
I mean, but is he expanding the nonconforming use, or is he, is?
Well, the, the, the building, and if I'm correct, there's always been these type of medical or professional offices, it's not like it was this and then it became retail for a few years and then it switched back. It sounds like it's always kind of been this way.
Should we table this and, and let the village do some further investigation?
I'd say table it, we'll talk to some administration, find out a bit more of the building history, find out the most appropriate route to go is.
I guess my hesitation with tabling would be, I mean, he's paid the money to get the special land use on the building. If there's not an issue with granting the special land use so that he can continue with his business, why are we gonna table it, send a council that just hold him off for weeks or months longer? Would be my concern. Now, the only thing that I, that I would question is the off-street parking. Is that sufficient for the tenants, the number of tenants, and employees, patients, or do we have to then recommend the look at going to the village for the parking lot?
He's got a massive amount of public parking across the street that is counted by the village government, or anybody that joins that parking lot.
I understand, I know, but the village put in the parking in lieu of if you don't have enough off-site parking, so if you're adding a tenant, that would fall into place.
I, everybody else that joins.
I would just, I would just talk.
I know that, but everybody else that joins that parking lot.
How many tenants total are in the building?
Six, seven?
Okay. Cause then what, how many?
I got twenty parking spaces.
Right, you said twenty, yeah.
And I wonder how many parking spaces, I, I don't wanna pick on the orthodontist, but I wonder how many parking spaces he has.
Yeah, I, the payment, the off-street parking went into effect, I think, a few years ago within the village. I don't think we have anything to do with that, I would just probably reference that back to the clerk and president.
But your ordinance is twenty years old, and it calls for off-street parking. So when he came in, and I, I'm not picking anyone out, I'm just talking about precedence.
Yeah.
I mean, he has no off-street parking that I know of, maybe two or three in the back, but he has probably half as many square feet as mine who built it. So it's just, there's a conflict there, and I'm kinda caught in the middle of it, and I feel bad for this lady that can't practice medicine.
Yeah, I don't.
You, let me ask you, you have how many tenants now?
Um, one, two, three, four, five, six, six.
Okay, and you, the whole building, you want to convert to medical offices?
Well, I, I want it to be able to be used for that.
Okay, so, I mean, you're not having an exodus of people out of the building all of a sudden, right?
No.
Okay.
You got six tenants, how many suites?
Um, I think there's nine.
Nine suites, so you have three empties or vacants?
No plans to alter the interior of the building at this point?
Not at this point, but I may, in the future, you have to do that for.
Combinations, yeah.
They granted the, they granted the, previous planning commission, village council granted a land use for the property on Bailey Street, which has a grand total of six or seven parking spots, and it's a six thousand, I think it's six thousand square feet. Isn't it?
For the build.
Yeah, for the new build.
The new, the medical.
Dale's quote-unquote cleaning up his act by saying, hey, if I wanted to bring other doctors in, I don't want, I don't wanna have to come back and drop a thousand bucks every time. It's.
Well, nobody wants to see that.
Yeah, there's no reason.
So.
There's no reason not to approve.
We can vote on, you know.
I'd make a motion to approve it.
Well, we have to, first we gotta vote on these review standards. There are eight standards we will review one at a time. I'll make a motion that we, we review the special land use standards. There are eight of them, we vote on each one, each one must pass. If one fails, then the whole, whole thing fails. So I'll make that motion, anybody, one second? Okay, I guess, Mr. Grandstaff, all right, the motion before us is to vote on review standards for the property at wherever it is, one twenty-two South Rawls. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay, motion passes, so, here we go with the review standards. Number one, the proposed special land use shall be of such location, size, and character that it will be in harmony with the appropriate and orderly development of the surrounding neighborhood and/or vicinity and applicable regulations of the zoning district in which it is to be located. All in favor of that? We have to vote on this, everybody, so.
If we could pause real quick, if we go through with this special land use so we don't determine that it's just nonconforming, can operate as-is, we don't need to make any motion, then I would expect that this was not needed and he would get refunded if we continue this way. If we just say it was nonconforming, he can operate as-is, we don't make any motion, any movement, then it's a done deal. My understanding, your thoughts, because if it's nonconforming, he shouldn't have ever had to done this, right? So then, he shouldn't even have to pay.
The clerk said he had to.
But if it's nonconforming, then did he have to?
She's the zoning administrator. He wants to, he's paying a thousand dollars to have the paper in hand.
But he also asked, he said he didn't think it should have went that way.
Would he rather have the thousand dollars back or the paper in hand? Would you rather have this board vote, or would you rather have your thousand dollars back? That's, I'm serious about that.
Hold on, one second, Karen.
I don't know if we can do that, we can't do that, can we?
I, I don't think.
We can't vote, you know, a thousand dollars has been paid once.
We, we don't, we don't have the right to do that.
Yeah, right.
That is, that's the zoning administrator's, and my understanding is Cindy's actually the zoning administrator.
Right, yeah.
I just don't know why it got to this point.
Well, we're kinda in the weeds here, so.
Karen, could you?
I guess I would say, if the planning commission would like to grant the applicant the ability to use that building as a medical office tonight, we can grant special land use, unless it's determined by investigation with village departments that it was a nonconforming use, then allow it to continue to operate as a nonconforming use. And then the administration can handle how they would like to, you know, figure that out and realize that the special use may have not been needed.
He's paid a thousand dollars to ask.
We have to, we have to have information on the history, according to village records. I'm sure if we dive into that, we find that's the case, then appropriate actions would be taken. So you can make that motion where grant special land use unless it's determined it was a nonconforming use, then allow it to continue to operate as a nonconforming use.
So we can grant it unless it's determined that it's nonconforming?
Upon, you know, village department.
Granted, yeah, okay.
Is it, thanks.
We'll grant special.
Granted, until and unless.
On further investigation.
We find out then.
You know what, if you wanna go through all of this, I would just as soon leave the thousand, it'd upset me, but I would like to get it over and done. A thousand dollars, if we could pass it tonight and say it's now approved, let's do it.
And there's no question.
I don't understand.
That's what I'm saying.
The question of eight of them, I'm glad you're here to explain what that means, cause I, I can't answer those eight questions.
Some of them don't make sense, to be honest, but it's required by the state, the state requires.
Thank you for clarification, and I guess we can just, I'll be quiet.
So let's, let's just move forward, we're gonna move forward with the review standards.
It's gonna be hard, Bill, but you'll do it.
So I'm gonna do one number, number one again.
Apologize.
And we have to vote on, okay?
Okay.
Let's not just sit here going, huh, you know, it happens. All right, so, review standards, once again, review standard number one, the proposed special land use shall be of such location, size, and character that it will be in harmony with the appropriate and orderly development of the surrounding neighborhood and/or vicinity and applicable regulations of the zoning district in which it is to be located. All agree or disagree? Everybody vote? Yes, you agree with number one?
I agree.
Aye. Yes.
All right, unanimous?
This is a roll call.
No, it doesn't need to be.
No, we don't need a roll call for this, we'll just. Number two, the proposed use shall be of a nature that will make vehicular and pedestrian traffic no more hazardous than is normal for the district involved, taking into consideration vehicular turning movements in relations to routes of traffic flow, proximity, relationship to intersections, adequacy of site distances, location, and access of off-street parking, and provisions for pedestrian traffic with particular attention minimizing child vehicle interfacing. Everybody agree with that? Yes?
Yes.
Thank you, okay. Number three, the proposed use shall be designed as to the location, size, intensity, site layout, and periods of operation of any such proposed such use to eliminate any possible nuisance emanating therefrom which might be noxious to the occupants of any other nearby permitted uses, whether by reason of dust, noise, fumes, vibration, smoke, or lights. Everybody agree with that?
Yes.
Okay, number four, the proposed use shall be such that the proposed location and height of buildings or structures and location, nature, and weight of walls, fences, and landscaping will not interfere with or discourage the appropriate development and use of adjacent land and buildings or unreasonably affect their value. Everybody agree?
Yes.
Disagreement? Okay. Number five, the proposed use shall relate harmoniously with the physical and economic aspects of adjacent land uses as regards prevailing shopping habits, convenience of access by prospective patrons, continuity of development, and need for particular services and facilities in specific areas of the village. Everyone agree?
Yes.
The proposed use is necessary for the public convenience at the proposed location, that's, everybody agree?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Number seven, the proposed use is so designed, located, planned, and to be operated that the public health, safety, and welfare will be protected.
Yes.
Number eight, the proposed use shall not be detrimental or injurious to the neighborhood within which it is located nor shall such use operate as a deterrent to future land uses permitted within the zoning district, and shall be in harmony with the general purpose and intent of the zoning ordinance. Everyone agree?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. So, okay, I guess the special man, land use then passes. So it's been granted.
You need to, you need to make a motion to approve.
Oh, yeah, okay, okay, yes, forgot, getting ahead of myself.
Make a motion, we approve it then.
I'll support.
Okay, Mr. Parker, I think I got in there. All right, all, the motion before us is to approve this special land use for one twenty-two South Rawls. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Passes unanimously.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dale.
Okay, that was one. Okay, site plan review. Site plan review for one five-three-five-five thirty-two Mile Road.
So today the planning commission has a site plan review for Fullage Cannabis Company located at fifteen-three-five-five thirty-two Mile Road. This is in the industrial district. The applicant is revising its previously submitted site plan from October twenty-two for marijuana dispensary. The proposed plans include parking, landscaping, and maintaining the existing garage on premises. The applicant is proposing to remove the existing parking and driveway and provide a new driveway with new parking areas to the east and north of the existing house and garage. Twelve parking spaces will be located east of the house and the garage. Two of these spaces will be barrier-free, located closest to the five-foot walkway leading from the parking, parking area to the building. Twenty additional parking spaces will be provided north of the existing building and garage. A seven-foot walkway from the rear parking area will lead to the five-foot walkway towards the building's entrance at the side. A total of thirty-two parking spaces have been provided. Both parking areas would maintain thirty-two, would maintain two-way maneuvering lanes as the site is only accessible off of one driveway off of thirty-two Mile Road. Parking spaces are indicated to have ten-foot width by twenty-foot width, with the exception of two angled barrier-free spaces that are eight-foot width by eighteen-foot length with a maneuvering lane of twenty-four feet. The applicant has provided a photometric plan. Plans indicate lighting would not exceed point-one-foot candles at the property line and a maximum uniformity ratio which has been indicated at six-point-five to one, which meets the standards of section forty-six dash five seventy-five of the zoning ordinance. An unloading area measuring eighteen-foot width by fifteen-foot length has been provided east of the garage. A dumpster with an enclosure of six-foot-high masonry walls and simulated wood slate gate has been provided. A six-inch concrete slab measuring ten by ten feet has been indicated in accordance with section forty-six dash five-seven-seven of the zoning ordinance. The applicant is proposing to remove most of the existing landscaping in the front of the site and trees where the proposed parking lot areas are to be. New landscaping has been provided in the front, which includes five crabapple trees and seven red maple trees. A minimum of ten trees are required in the industrial district, and the applicant has provided twelve. Four of the red maple trees will be planted after the phase-two building is completed and the house is connected to sanitary sewer. Based on, based upon the above review, I recommend approval of the site plan subject to compliance with all engineering and building permitting requirements and compliance with all Michigan Department of Great Lakes and energy requirements relative to the construction near wetlands and floodplains.
You're, I missed a little bit of what you said there. You're recommending approval?
I recommend approval, subject to compliance with all engineering and building permitting requirements and compliance with all Michigan Department of Great Lakes energy requirements relative to construction near wetlands and floodplains.
Okay, thank you. Any comments, commissioners?
I've got a few questions.
Okay.
When you were here in October, you were here for the special land use, correct?
Correct.
We did not approve a site plan, we only approved a special land use, correct?
We did site, actually we did site plan and special land use, and then if you recall, we had a second phase at that time. And so since that time, we actually, you know, had looked at the site, gotten feedback, and looked in and said, hey, by leaving the. and looked in and said, hey, by leaving the garage, we can actually leave the aesthetics, and there's no longer plans for a phase-two, so it's all be one phase and.
So, it's a revised.
Yeah, so now we're back for revised site plan.
You're looking at a revised site plan, okay, alright, I just wanted to clarify that. Got a couple of questions. Your dumpster, Correll.
Mm-hmm.
How is, so if this happens in the daytime and you have a full parking lot full of cars, how is, how is a garbage truck going to get in there, dump that truck, and get back out of there? How are they gonna turn around? It doesn't look to me that there's sufficient area for that truck to turn around.
Uh, yes, so our engineer was able to set it up, so we do have maneuvering for the, getting the, um, you know, trash out of there. The facilities generate very, very little trash, and it's all by a secure, um, uh, transporter that, or rather, service provider that comes in, and so we can set it up for when they come in. Um, and so, you know, we wouldn't have it so it interferes with the day-to-day business.
It's not a regular, general?
No, they really don't produce much, it's really just the employees' food waste. Um, all the product needs to be rendered, um, uh, non-recognizable and mixed, and really, you don't have products, you know, at that rate at the retail level. There's really not much spoilage, so to speak.
I'm not, I mean, I'm not concerned about the, the, the waste of, I'm just concerned with the vehicular movement of, of a garbage truck.
Yep.
You know, and how they're gonna pick up a dumpster and turn around and get back out on the thirty-two Mile Road without having to back, I mean, there's no way they're gonna back out on the thirty-two Mile Road.
No, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, they have to be able to turn around. Um, I noted a sign at the corner of thirty-two and Powell, also a sign on the site. You're permitted two signs on the actual site.
Mm-hmm.
What's, what is this proposed sign?
So, we didn't, uh, we haven't gone through with the sign company yet to get our, um, exact signs in order, and then, you know, come back forward with that permit. We would like to have done this time, just didn't come to, you know, fruition yet. And so, since the owner also controls the corner, if possible, we'd love to put a sign over there, but we're gonna come back with a sign permit, which we have, you know, designed on our signs. Certainly, the monument sign on the site by the driveway, and then, you know, we'd love, we didn't get a chance, honestly, to dig into the sign ordinance and talk about the corner one, so proposed, but obviously, we'd love to have something on the corner if possible, since they do control it.
Right, well, based, I mean, just based on the ordinance, you're allowed, you're allowed two signs on an industrial site. You're allowing one on the ground, you're allowing one on the building.
Ah, okay.
So, that was what I was asking, so I'm asking if that's gonna be like, I don't see anything in the ordinance saying anything about off-site signs, but I don't know.
Yeah.
You know, there may be something.
Yeah.
Um, different. Um, what's the paving material you're gonna be paving with? Are you gonna be doing concrete, are you gonna be doing asphalt? I don't see it on the site anywhere.
Yeah, we haven't decided yet on that.
Okay, and then I see something about, uh, due to the severe grades on the property, there may need to be some significant retaining walls to adequately transition from the existing home to the driveway and parking. Any idea what the height of those walls are gonna be?
I will certainly keep them within code, we don't wanna have any fencing or anything. Uh, the property does naturally slope pretty significantly, as you know, probably towards the creek over in that area. And so, we just have to meet with grade on parking, you know. You could park and have no problem pedestrian, and obviously, we have to meet code, so I'm not anticipating, based on initial talks with the engineer, that we're gonna have, you know, five-foot retaining walls, so smaller step walls, three feet and under, uh, certainly for cause, safety, all the, you know, fencing is not really. So, we're, and then being on the site a number of times, I think that should be achievable, even though it does slope, if you can see the topography on there, it's not a cliff by means.
No, it's not a cliff, but there is, yeah, I mean, it's, it's a gradual slope, but it's, it's still, I mean, I was, I was, you know, I went out and looked at the site, and I mean, there's, there's substantial grade dropping there. I guess one of the other things that really, one of the things that really concerns me is, is, you know, the detention pond, the, how close it is to the creek. I mean, I do see that, um, you know, there is a specification in there that there will be, you know, some type of a filter or, or something to filter that runoff from the parking lot. My concern is, based on looking in our ordinance, and I mean, it says here in our planning commission review, on page fifteen of our ordinance, "The site plan shall be reviewed by the planning commission with reference to the specific requirements of this ordinance. The planning commissions shall also review the site plan relative to other planning documents and other applicable ordinances. The commission shall require review and comment from the village planner, village engineer, village engineer and village attorney where appropriate." I don't think it's necessary to have an attorney's, you know, comment right now, but we're talking about slopes and water and runoff and the creek, and the creek runs into the river, which in turn, I mean, we need, to be honest, in the entire time that I've been on this planning commission, I've never seen an engineering report, not one. This, we need an engineer's comment, we need our engineer's comment on this, on this in particular plan. I don't know much about, I mean, I know enough about runoff and things like that, and I know in all the communities that I have worked in, they always get engineer's comments, because it's, it's relevant, especially when you're dealing with wetlands and water and, and many other things. I think the project is a great idea, but I just feel like we have to be secure in knowing that, that it's, what you've got and what you're proposing is, is something that's agreeable to our engineer. I do see a couple of other things, and, um, like on the, the, it says here on your dumpster, it says, "Six-foot-high chain link gates with vinyl simulated wood slats." And when I look at the ordinance, on page twenty-eight, "Chain link fencing with view obscuring slats or wooden fencing shall not be considered to be suitable screening materials." Can you change that?
Oh, yes, certainly, yeah, that was just what the, what he chose, so, you know, the main thing, we were more looking at the maintenance-free, and plus the wood can get beat up, so, yes, certainly, the more the vinyl planking, yeah.
Okay, okay, alright, I appreciate that. Yeah, I just, I feel like there's some things that, that have to be addressed. You know, you answered the paving material, one other thing. The FEMA map that they're looking at, shown on this plan, is a two thousand and six map, is that the newest map that there is?
Uh, well, yes, we did, uh, consult with the wetland engineer and specialists to give us our delineations, and then we do obviously have a full site engineering for the detention and everything, and obviously, there's a lot of businesses along, you know, the river, and last thing we wanna do is, you know, pollute the river, so it will be fully engineered, and really, will be better for the river in a sense, because it's not engineered now, right? And so, even though we have a new parking lot, it's gonna be over-engineered for the site, so I believe overall, it should be actually kinda help the area, I don't wanna over-promise, but they over-engineer it, and then also, as the name implies, foliage, um, they have a deep passion for all plants, and it'll be very well landscaped, and I think you're gonna, you know, really like the site overall, and that's why they've kinda adapted it too, with the history and talking with Chet and everything, and keeping the garage down, so I think it's even more enhanced, hopefully.
Okay, um, can I ask what the use is gonna, are you gonna use the upstairs of the building?
Uh, no, it's kinda, yeah, it's a real unique, uh, property, but given it was, it's an older property, the upstairs, I mean, um, it would just, you know, with the state requirements, everything else, it's not really needed also, so basically, we'll just, you know, use that for, you know, will be used.
Okay, what, um, just, just, um, are the, will packaging hours be extended beyond the hours of the, of the retail facility?
Uh, great question, uh, well, we found most of the retail that, um, as much as you have space, you don't really do much packaging and prep at the store, and even though you have deliveries, it's really just kinda like most retail business or restaurant, we have a little prep, so you're only talking not, opening, closed time, so an hour maybe be, uh, before and after at times. Certainly, there could be times to get ready for events and things, but that's not really as much as going on the packaging at the store.
Right, okay, okay, I appreciate your time.
Oh, yeah, when I answer a question, make sure you guys understand it, and so forth, sir.
Can I ask, um, about the road out front, thirty-two Mile Road? Um, has there been a traffic study or anything with the county regarding? My concern is that intersection right there, because it does drop, it goes downhill when you get to that light right there at Powell and thirty-two, right?
Yeah, certainly.
And then there's that concern of, if, so if I'm heading, um, east, and I need to turn left into your.
Yeah.
driveway, is there, how are we gonna do that without obstruction of traffic that's gonna back it up at that light? I guess that's.
Yeah, so we are.
Is there a turn lane, is there a?
Yeah, we are working with the county, obviously, the road commission, and so we've gotten some preliminary feedback from them, and that's also why we've adjusted the driveway a little bit, one of the poles looks like it's gonna be moved. We'll have, uh, D-cell lanes, uh, on the side, and then they already have kind of an apron and, um, a D-cell lane, if you will, already kinda leading to the airport, so that'll be factored in for your eastbound question there. So, certainly, you know, initial feedback and so forth has led to moving of one of the traffic, or rather, one of the utility poles, shifting of the driveway a little more to the east, wait, no, I mean, yeah, and then, um, again, we're still getting feedback further from them, so obviously, they have to sign up for anything before we do it, and so, but that feedback's going well, and they believe, again, kinda already have the natural, or nat- natural, but rather, a D-cell lane on the other side too.
Okay. Yeah, 'cause that was, like, 'cause I know that Spielem is fifty-five coming from Romeo Plank into town, and I just, that curve right there and all of it, it's like, ooh.
Even with that light, seems like they're already going, you know, they're stopped at the light, they're going fifty before, you know, before you know it, yeah.
Right, yeah, I know that, it's, it's dangerous sometimes at that intersection, right? So, that's my concern, is that, you don't have.
Yeah, certainly.
Traffic backed up or bogged over there, that's gonna cause.
Yeah. And the last thing we want is an operator too, you don't want angry customers, folks that can hack in, folks that'll get turned off, we're not the only option in town for this type of product, right? And so, obviously, you wanna be value-add and so forth, we think the site location is very unique, it's gonna lend itself well, but it's got a floor, else it doesn't work, so, we're, you know, certainly looking at that, so I appreciate it, yeah.
Since, since we're, he's dumping into a stream, who grants him permission to do that?
Uh, he would need, I'm assuming you would, it would be Eagle, correct?
Uh, yeah, Eagle now, and then also, yeah, we work with the county as well, Health Department, you and Public Works, yeah.
Public Works, Miller's Department is, yeah, they, they have to grant, they have to say this is okay, and then the state has to say it's okay too.
Yep, they're both gonna have to say it's okay, I, yeah.
Yeah, they, he just can't do it without.
No, he just can't do it, no, you know, he can't just.
That's, I thought that there, there are secondary approvals that will be required for him to, to do that, and it'll be the road commission says, yeah, okay, for the, that you're not gonna get people killed out here, and that Eagle and the, the Public Works people say, yeah, this is, this is all legal and legitimate. I know you have to, you have to engineer against the amount of water you can dump at any one time.
Ms. Hall, are you, uh, is, is Ba Marito, are you requesting that Ba Marito or somebody evaluate this site plan?
Oh, I have no doubt in my mind, and when it comes to, when it comes to the time for, for building permits and things like that, that Mr. Ba Marito will, will definitely handle everything that needs to be handled that way. My, um, again, my concern is the fact that we don't have an engineer's comment, and, and this is, this is a pretty, um, in my eyes, it's a, you know, it's.
If it has to go before council, or if it can just, we can just recommend.
Well, I mean, I don't think it, it.
Administration to have our engineer.
Well, it says right here in our ordinance.
Yeah.
I mean, it's, it's, it's a provision of a site plan, of the review procedures of a site plan in our ordinance.
But administratively, it wasn't done, it never has been done.
I'm sure it has.
Uh, not, not to my knowledge. I've been on, yeah, I, I mean, I'm sure it has been at some point in time, but, I mean, on sites like, I mean, there's, you know, it says specifically on sites that, you know, "Commission shall require review and comment from the village planner, village engineer, and village attorney where appropriate." There's times when you don't need comment from, you know, more often the attorney than the engineer, but.
Yeah.
On a site like this, I personally would be more comfortable with an engineer's comment, because I don't know, you know, "Stormwater detention will be provided before discharging at the East Pond Creek. A water quality device will be installed prior to discharge of stormwater to the East Pond Creek. The only wetlands on the site are along the banks of the East Pond Creek. The wetland areas are within floodplain area depicted on the plan. There are no wetlands that would impact the proposed building and parking area." You're, I don't, I'm not an engineer.
So, would you be comfortable, then, more comfortable tabling until we send this to?
I feel like we need a comment from the village engineer on this in particular plan, yes, I do.
The village engineer isn't even the person who's gonna, he's, this goes, this goes to Miller, and it goes to the, uh, water resources people, our village engineer really doesn't have, he's not the one that, that grants any approval sometimes.
No, but they may comment on what, if there's anything, the engineer doesn't give you approval, they make a, they make a comment, just like our planner makes a comment based on the ordinance, and the engineer will say, yes, that works, or no, this, you know, they give, they give their comment, and if it's conflicting, then it's revised to go along with whatever our engineer feels that needs to be done. I would feel more comfortable with an engineering comment, but that's, you know.
If I may, through the chair, comment?
Sure.
Wonderful, thank you. So, a little further background, so we've had two pre-planning meetings with, uh, Mr. Ba Marito and the, and the entire team, so we've had, uh, the engineers already engaged on it, obviously, our engineer's a professional engineer that also does municipal work, they have certain guidelines and principles they have to sign off on, you know, it's, it's their name and stamp on it as well. So, we've already had two pre-planning meetings with them, um, you know, looking at the site, and also, we gotta keep in mind, the natural flow is to discharge into the, right, like, that's kinda part of the whole natural process of how it flows, and so, again, I really think it's gonna enhance it, 'cause we're over-engineering for the site, yes, we're adding some, you know, hard surface, impermeable surface, we're capturing all that, treating it and so forth, and so we're very confident, um, just like we see in the vast, vast majority of the projects, you know, we go forward that, okay, site plan meets the requirements, and then obviously, in engineering, we can't build it, and even if it's our risk, if we go forward and start building a parking lot next to the, oh, no, you can't, well, I guess that's our risk, you know, we doesn't ever get to that point, because it's already approved, we go forward, and then as we're building it, say, rather, we don't build it to code or what we're saying, you know, again, that's our problem, our risk, we have to, you know, correct it, so. You know, what we see in the vast majority of the projects, or when I chaired my planning commission or in township, it was, you get the comments, but we have faith in those engineers and professionals as we go down the stream into construction docks and so forth, that just like a lot of times, you know, C-plan stuff, these nice architectural things, well, then comes the as-build, sometimes they adjust, right? So, just trying to give you confidence of context that we've had, had a number of meetings with the municipality, our professionals are on it, you know, I believe this is certainly within the, the natural process, and will, you know, exceed what's needed, and hopefully, we can, you know, earn your support to keep moving forward, 'cause we haven't been working on it for quite a long time, and we're hoping tonight, you guys hopefully see it as an enhancement, 'cause obviously, before, when the site plan was approved, there was a parking lot or two, right? We're taking down the garage, we're really not adding much more hard space, so to speak, so, again, you know, let me know if there's anything else you can answer, but.
So, you, you, uh, Mr. Ba Marito and our engineers have seen this new plan?
Uh, yeah, we got some initial reviews, yeah, and we've had two, uh, meetings, there's been a couple tweaks, but nothing related to discharge or anything like that, you know, 'cause now we're at, leaving the garage, so a little bit of change, but.
Sure, it was probably Mike, and Mike is, or I guess they're both mics, right?
Yeah.
If they've seen it, we could just ask for his comments.
Or, I mean, I, yeah, I mean, we could ask for his comments, I mean, if, I have confidence in Mr. Ba Marito that he's not going to allow, you know, if he's working with the engineer, just like, it's just like the retention walls, you know, I do, I know that if the wall is over a certain height, Mike, Mike is gonna require engineering on it. You know, I, I know that, so.
But in this case, Ms. Hall, you feel it'd be better if we had something from Mr. Ba Marito on paper?
Well, I mean, if he's, I mean.
And the engineer.
I, I would like something from, I mean, just to, you know. Is this, Karen, is this something that if we were to approve, that they could administratively oversee and make sure that the engineering and was, you know, that the engineering worked for the site? That they spoke with the engineer, could they administratively speak with him?
Um, possibly, you know, but, um, but as the planning commission, we have your review tonight, if you feel that there's not enough information.
Right.
You guys make a sound decision, then.
Right, right.
Why can't we make a contingent on?
Contingent on a, a positive review from the engineer?
Yeah.
I mean, could we, could we do that and, and leave that up administratively? You know, a contingent approval, contingent and the administration can approve it. So, Mike and the village engineer and, and in the office, it can be.
His name's Mike too, that's why.
Yeah, right, 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 so Mike, what's his, Mike McDonald?
McDonald, yeah.
So, Mr. McDonald from Hubble Rock and Clark, and with Mr. Ba Marito's, I, I would say with their, you know. Yeah, upon engineering approval, yeah, upon engineering and building approval, we'll. Upon engineering and building approval, then it would be, I would be acceptable, yeah, I would be good with that.
One other question that just kind of popped up real quick. You said there is no, currently no phase two?
No, and then we're not planning one, there is, take that totally off-mines plans, we don't have, we're not gonna try to sneak something in, there's no plans for any other buildings now or in the future.
So if phase two's gone, in the landscaping, and to talk about the four additional...
Yeah, that's part of phase one, certainly.
That would bring you two that are required, right? Those will be then initially, or planned with phase one?
Correct, yeah.
Okay.
Ms. Hall, do you wanna make the motion for, on the site plan?
All right, I would like to make a motion to approve the site plan. Contingent upon acceptable, except, contingent upon the site plan and all engineering be acceptable to Mr. Mike McDonald from Hubble Roeth and Clark, and to Mr. Mike Bob Marito, Village of Romeo building official.
Mr. Webb supports.
Did you include anything with, like you said, with the dumpster corral?
Well, yes, and, okay, so, yes, and we can include, so we'll include the dumpster corral meeting ordinance, and the, the stormwater detention, the, um, the water quality device...
Yeah.
And the height of the walls specifically.
Yeah.
Would you include the landscaping with the trees now that there's no phase two?
Yes, and the landscaping with the trees now that there's no phase two.
Taking the notes, yeah.
You're right in that, so the more you...
I'm gonna go back and watch the tape.
Watch Bruce's meeting last night, some of her motions are...
All right, Mr. Webb, did you wanna, Mr. Webb, seconds? Okay, the motion before us is to approve the site plan with contingencies to be enumerated by Ms. Hall in writing. All in favor? Hi, everybody? All right.
No.
No, you're opposed? Okay, Mr. Grandstaff is opposed.
Okay.
Everyone else supports. Okay, so...
Really appreciate all the consideration, timing, and thoughts into it. Appreciate you before to move forward, thank you.
All right, item number ten, draft amendment for accessory buildings. Ms. LeVar?
Um, so at our last planning commission meeting, uh, we reviewed a draft amendment for, um, accessory buildings in the R and one district, um, to, um, edit some of the language there. And based off that last meeting, um, it was decided to edit item number five, removing the existing language. The existing language that said dwelling units with attached garages may be allowed not more than one detached accessory building, not to exceed two-hundred-and-fifty square feet in total area. Dwelling units without an attached garage may be allowed not more than one detached accessory building, not to exceed seven-hundred-and-ninety square feet in total area. This language has been removed, and, um, instead, um, we're proposing to replace it with, in no instance shall the ground floor area of an accessory building combined with the ground floor area of the principal building and garage, either attached or detached, exceed thirty-five percent of the maximum lot coverage. I'm sorry, I forgot an of between, um, area and the...
I thought that's what we wanted.
What?
The wording that she put down there. That's what, what's, what we wanted, I...
Comments from anyone?
I think she succinctly said that's what we were aiming for. You can have an accessory building, and it's, the total of the, uh, of the ground square footage can't exceed thirty-five percent of the lot size. And it took out all that other stuff.
So, anybody have any thoughts on what we wanna do, do we wanna...
I just have one, one question, Karen, um... So if we do it like this, I know there's, I mean, this would mean every building. This is, even if you've got like one of those little, you know, what are they, five-foot by two-foot sheds? That would, that you have sitting on the ground somewhere, that would be included in this.
Right.
I guess it would have to be defined as a permanent or temporary structure. If it was one of those vinyl, pop-together sheds, that's not a permanent structure that's movable, I don't think that would apply as an accessory building.
No.
What about one of the, one of the sheds that's built on a wooden floor? That is, you know, they're usually like hundred-and-twenty, you know, ten by twelve.
See, if it doesn't have a footing, it's not permanent. You can pick it up with a high-low or crane and move it, it's not an accessory building, would be...
So then the question would come in is, do we allow temporary structures? 'Cause then that would be considered a temporary structure, correct? That wouldn't, right, okay.
I don't think there's anything that, that denies a temporary structure, from what I've seen. I was asking, what defines an accessory building? That's my question, but...
Has to have a footing, correct.
Is that in the ordinance somewhere, that it has to have a footing? Are we saying that now, or...
Well, look at number one, it says it shall conform to all regulations of this chapter applicable to the main building. So wouldn't that, if my main building has to have a footing...
Where it's attached. That says where your accessory building is attached to the main building.
That's just building code.
Yeah. So, if you had a wood shed off the back of your house, it would have to be...
So do we need to adopt this and then send it to the council?
Um, you would have to hold a public hearing.
Okay, so we need to schedule a public hearing for this.
Yeah, I, um, I'll have to look and see what the schedule is for the newspaper. I'll have to talk with Cindy and figure out. It might not, we might not be able to have a public hearing until June, depending on when stuff comes out, I'm not quite sure.
Would they then have to go to council for final approval, or...
Yeah.
So, could council then hold the public hearing, so that it can be done before their meeting where they approve it?
No, we have, you have to hold a public hearing here.
Okay.
Somehow we need to schedule a public hearing.
Okay, so we just need to schedule a public hearing, so take that up with Cindy, and then we'll go from there.
Do we want to adopt this? Is this, okay, do you wanna adopt this?
Do you need a motion on that?
Yes.
Can I make that motion?
You sure can.
Mr. Parker, are you gonna second it?
I'm gonna second, I just wanna clarify this. If you have an attached garage, you can still have an accessory building not to exceed the thirty-five percent.
Right. I think, uh, up above, it says, um, no, no more than one attached or detached accessory building may be permitted for each lot excluding garages, either attached or detached. So you get one accessory building, get a garage, and you get a principal building.
So carriage barn is not a garage.
That's an accessory building.
Yeah, accessory building.
So, and the way that, the way you just read that, so you can have a shed, you can have a detached accessory building, and you can have a, an attached garage, providing you're not over thirty-five percent.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, all right.
I'll second, for sure.
Now, the motion before us is to, um, adopt this language, uh, and wait for the public hearing. All in favor? Unanimous there? Lisa, all right, so draft amendment, office, okay. Did you wanna talk about your collected information?
Oh, my, my, my data. Um, I just put together, I was curious...
And thank you.
You're welcome, thank you. I was, as, when we got to talking about, um, the, the office district and potential mixed use, you know, I drive up and down the street every day, and you take for granted what's there, you don't really look, you're watching traffic, and you don't, you know, so I, I myself wanted, wondered if there was anything, so we could see how many residential homes are in that district within an office? What are the buildings that are office, what are they being used for, and what else is there? And, um, I contacted the village and found out that there was not, um, anything that I could look at, like a quick reference sheet of, you know, so, um, I told Cindy that I would take it upon myself to put together, um, just a quick, just so we could look at it. And I was actually really surprised at how much more residential usage there was in that district than I realized. I, you know, when we say office, we think that there's a lot of office use in there, and there, there is, but there's significantly a lot of residential.
And I wanna thank you for that, too. And then I wanted to expand on this a little bit, okay? So I went in and I checked all the assessing records to see who had P R Es and who did not. There are twenty-two, all right, there are twenty-two hundred percent P R Es. There's one with fifty-two percent, one that's, claims fifty-two percent P R E. There's one that claims seventy percent, and there's one that claims sixty-five percent. So out of the, what did you, how many total did you have here? Fifty-two, seventy-one, seventy... Out of the eighty-five parcels, there's twenty-five that, you know, are principal residences in some way or another. Seems that there's a lot of them that are rentals. I know there's, I mean, there's some of them that are in there that don't have P R Es that use the, the lots for, you know, various different things. But that, I was, I was kind of, I didn't really realize, I didn't realize there was twenty-two, you know. But again, all right, with that, with being, with that being said, a lot of these, so like, if you look at, if you look at your map, so this would be, um, I'm thinking the name of the street now, Washington Street. Number one and two, number eight, number ten, and number twelve aren't, you know, they seem like they're, they're odd for being where they're placed and then in that, in particular district. And then, again, the ones that are run along Bailey, and then the ones that run along Hart, you know, they seem, I mean, I, I kind of see why they're split up in that section, because they were trying to section things off.
Right, right.
But they don't front, you know, they really don't front Main Street. I kinda get the, you know, I'm, I'm looking at this, and I'm looking at like, say, number one, two. Number one and two have P R Es, number six, obviously, is a vacant lot, but it's, it's, some of them are just oddly, it's just the way that the ordinance map was, was put together.
Yeah, and I could think about those people that are on the Bailey Street, um, that are, technically, they're in that office district, so someone could run an office out of any of those homes. And I was like, but I don't even know that those residents even realize that they're, you know, your whole street is, you're in an office district, you're in a, that's...
You're in an office district, right, right. But, I mean, they've been single-family homes, and they've been able to be there for years, unless, you know...
Yeah.
I had a brief conversation with some of the past administration, and they kind of always referred to, they were, so this was referred to as a mixed, mixed use prior, but it was always just called the office district. So I think that's kind of maybe how it ended up in our master plan as a mixed-use district, is because it was traditionally referred to. Is that because it already has the combination of residential, office...
I would think it's very possible.
And all that, so I, I think we just need a definition of the mixed use, and maybe we call this mixed use.
Lisa, of the Main Street properties, how many are claimed as P R Es?
I don't know, at least two.
I understand.
Uh, one, two, three, four, five. What's the deal, like, there's five?
Yeah, it's two more than I thought there were.
That's the exact same number I gave you.
Eh, smart aleck. So basically...
Well, we had talked about the one...
Yep.
And it, it's claimed with a P R E, when we were at the, when we did our workshop. The one just down the street from Apple Valley. And I didn't know, like, I didn't know the big blue house across the street from Dairy Queen.
That's Apple Valley, I was saying.
I, yeah, I didn't realize that.
It used to be a real estate office.
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, a, a, a number of these structures have in previous times, had, like, one, there was a bookstore at Long... There's, there was a, uh, it was a tailoring alteration shop there.
Yep, I remember that.
And I think it's important that of, of, everything along Main Street, there's only five, and I, I, there's five P R Es. The rest of these are held as either rental properties or investment properties, or somebody is, is throwing a lot of money down the drain, uh, and paying an extra eighteen and a half mils, and then they're openly admitting, no, this is not a principal resident, we're holding it for some other...
Let me say this, if you include the three that have partial P R Es, then there's eight. But then, again, they're partial P R Es, which tells me that the owner is living in one unit and renting out the other portion? Or the owner is living in one, in one part and using the other part as a business?
The one that the Dairy Queen is, next to Dairy Queen, there's, there's an apartment upstairs. And I don't know that that's one of them, I just, there, many of these structures actually are multifamily with, and with somebody living in them. The reality of the Bailey Street or Hart Street, those properties have utterly no, in, in my view, and this is what I've done for the last fifty years, uh, office or commercial potential. The fact that a line was drawn on the map a long time ago, uh, and that's really all that's happened. They, it, it, in, in the world of office space, it's changed dramatically in the last three years in and of itself. You know, there's, there's hundreds of people, I would even guess that there are many dozens in the Village of Romeo, people are literally running an office out of their home, 'cause that's where they work. I can think of two in my neighborhood that are, that's what the people do. They go down to the basement and, uh, file reports with somebody, and that's what they do for eight hours a day.
Working from home.
Working from home, but, but I guess my point would be that, that the map in itself is somewhat, uh, I don't like using the word silly, but it's silly.
So, do you wanna go over what we talked about?
Go ahead, yes, I think we should, we, we did have a meeting.
We did have a meeting, um, Mr. Parker, Mr. Minton, and myself.
We're on number twelve now, is that what you're saying?
Well, we're, we're still, we're, we're kinda, so we're... Well, we're, we're still, we're, we're kind of, so we're talking about.
Merging them into one.
Yeah, we're kind of talking about, so Janice provided us this so we could get into this. We all kind of came to the conclusion that the office mixed-use thing was a bit much, and mixed-use just fits better. There's no, then there's no confusion with office.
We wanted to eliminate the word office.
We wanted to eliminate the word office.
And we, that was, everything that she's saying was unanimous among the, among us. That's just, and we're just giving our report, okay?
Right.
So we're not looking at expanding usage of a mixed-use district. We're just.
We're taking the word office out, period.
Office out and changing it to mixed use.
To mixed use.
Maintaining the same definition of the office district.
I mean, what, what Mr., what Mr. Casson had in the, in the, in the master plan, that's a great definition of the mixed use. What Karen has here, you know, it is intended that the mixed-use district be applied, you know. There's other things that, you know, we need to decide what the, what we want there and what we don't want there, obviously. You know, and what she says, permitted uses, everything that is permitted in the office district as it has been. And then what do we, what would, what would we add? What else would be acceptable there, you know?
There is a vast number of things that are in the.
On here, right.
Are in the central business district, which we felt should be added in as part of the mixed use, like.
Antique shops.
Pardon?
Antique shops.
Antique shops, and, or if someone wants to sell teacups, which is china, or sewing alterations, or a bookshop, because it was a very successful bookshop there for many years. And it, these things tend to be somewhat small, almost a hobby business. I mean, that, that really, they don't have to be in the central business district, and one can actually envision someone wanting to operate such a business, which is extremely low volume in terms of the number of cars that are going to be generated there. And in almost all of the, very few of these can actually sustain much parking. And it's just, it's not there. So, but if you're running a sewing shop, then you have a customer, every one or two, and you can easily handle that without getting into any other requirements. Am I right?
Right, right.
Or the, the children's bookshop that, which was there for many years. Or, I left that list at home, but I went through and circled all of them.
I mean, so I know we said books, I left my, I left my list at home. I know we said bookstore, you know, we said like boutique shops. So like, you know, children's clothing, women's clothing, something, you know, antiques, like an arts, art, small art supply, or like a small gallery, you know, something on the, something on the scale of maybe like a Starkweather, you know, something like that. Gift shops. We, we all talked about parking, too, and, you know, there are, like, I, I mean, I've been, I've read far too much of this book.
A masochist. There really is a masochist here.
So if you look on page thirty-eight, it says, it, you know, page thirty-eight, section three, general parking requirements. Where the owners of two buildings whose operating hours do not overlap desire to utilize common off-street parking facilities, the planning commission may permit such dual-function at-site plan review, providing that the following conditions are met. Now, I mean, understand, we can, we can amend these to fit this section. The normal business hours of two buildings or uses in no way overlap except for custodial personnel. In the event that there is a change of use that no longer meets the criteria established for shared parking, the required number of spaces as provided below shall be installed. Like we were talking about the tea shop. We didn't, neither one, none of us had a problem with the tea shop, with the, but their parking. But again, we also talked about the fact that, okay, you have a business who wants to be here three hundred and sixty-five days a year. They lack two parking spaces. That's what they lack. We don't penalize special events and, and where people can park when those things happen, and we've got to kind of look at that. We don't, we need to be like accommodating in that situation because if they're having, like, if they're having a tea, and Ms. Troya, if her parking lot is open and she doesn't mind letting two people use her parking, you know, spots, then we shouldn't really have a problem with it.
We agreed unanimously that if they could show a permanent, permanent.
So contractual.
Permanent, meaning contractual, ease, whatever that passes muster with Mr. Clark or whoever is the village attorney, that, yep, they've, they've got this extra parking. That would be, that would be acceptable. Personally, and I don't know that anyone else agrees with me, if they wanted to quote-unquote buy their way in, which we're allowing elsewhere, and contribute to the village parking fund, then I, I felt that that would also be sufficient. Because if someone's going to be there, they're going to walk from whatever other parking that we're going to have. So if you're short two and you want to pony up fifteen thousand or eighteen thousand dollars, fine, you bought your way in. Because we're agreeing, or we, the village has agreed, that that is legitimate in, in the rest of the downtown area.
Well, see, and, and.
Okay, I mean, that is, that's in our, in our ordinances now. You're short, you can buy your way in. That's what the parking and lieu fee is. And so I'm saying that that could also apply for these people. The fact that the parking is, might be a block or two away, that doesn't matter. The parking throughout the town is a block or two away. And if people are too lazy to walk two blocks, well, that's their problem.
No, yeah, then that fee's intended use is to.
Is to buy more parking, right. I mean, we're, we're all agreeing on that.
I'm, I'm going to read a little further before we, you know, I do believe that, that that in particular, that in particular portion of this ordinance, and I'm, and don't hold me to this because I'm going to read and make sure, I believe that's applicable to the C B D.
Yeah.
Is what I believe.
It currently is.
I would say that it needs to be amended. Is, in terms of are we viewing our, our new mixed-use district, which used to be office slash mixed use, and we're dropping it to office, that, that parking in lieu would be expanded to this district.
Either alter the current or add an additional.
Right.
For the mixed-use district.
Well, again, if you, if, again, I'm in, I'm on page thirty-eight, and I'm, and I'm reading this, and I was reading this, you know, and it talks about common parking lot meets all locational requirements. Site plan shall indicate a reserved area that is capable of accommodating the required number of parking spaces if necessary. Now, this is in the case of, and I would say developer or slash, you know, business owner shall execute in an agreement and inform satisfactory to the village attorney that will obligate the property owners to install additional parking at the village council's request if the need arises. And you go over here, off-street parking facilities required herein shall be located within three hundred feet of the permitted use it is intended to serve. Such distance to the measured long lines of public access to the property between the nearest point of the parking facility and the building to be served. So for instance, the tea shop and the martial arts.
Right.
They would, they would be able to.
We're, we're.
We're on the same.
We specifically agreed on that, and, and just on it, it had to be permanent. That's me, and I'm not sure who, yes, who knows.
I just wanted to note, you know, the stuff, we have some of the stuff here already. It just took a little reading to find it.
Right.
But I think we agreed on everything that we talked about related to parking and what could be there and the mixed use. And it all, you know, I can't think of anything else that we would want.
No, we, but we, we thought that there was a, a number of uses which were shown as being the central business district that were more than applicable to the mixed-use district because they've already been there. Period. I mean, it's, there, there was a children's bookshop when you moved into town, Bill. There was a children's bookshop in the, in, on the corner of Hart when you moved into town. Really? Never mind.
I, I'm sorry, I can't.
Okay, sorry.
You, I can't hear.
Well, my wife can't either, so don't worry about it.
Well, and we.
I knew I liked her.
We, we talked about, like, T N T is a school.
Right.
And we talked about, you know, I mean, I think we can, we agreed on a lot. I, I don't think, I don't think we want our keys down there. Not that they're popular anymore. We don't want auto parts stores.
I, I know we didn't talk about it, but when you, when you actually look at the map, one wonders if the map itself shouldn't be altered and these other properties taken out.
Well, if you're going to take out the majority of the residential, you kind of defeat purpose even having a mixed-use district.
No, 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 I'm talking about, Justin, I'm, I'm talking, this is nonsense.
Then we're kind of eliminating the mixed, mixed use because we're eliminating residential. You're leaving two or three.
I'm leaving, I'm leaving all of the residences on Main Street, which are not really residences. But I'm taking away, I'd like to get rid of the stuff on Hart and Bailey.
That's what I'm saying. You're eliminating the residential, which is.
Strictly residential.
Which is what defines a, a mixed use. Without having the residential mixed in, it's not really a mixed use anymore. Am I, I don't know if I'm correct by saying that, because I thought that was the whole plan with a mixed-use district, is to mix it in with the residential districts.
For those properties that you're considering, is the abutting R one, or?
No.
Yes.
These are, okay, so.
Multifamily.
This abutting right here on Bailey is residential multiple.
Multiple, yeah.
Is it?
Yeah, the ranch field and all that.
You're right.
It's all, it's all multiple.
That's, I, and I, I mean, seems to be, I mean, it seems to be it would be difficult to take these out. I guess my question here is, is, so for these homes here, if they're, if they're in the office district, if they're in the office district and this house burned down, and it's not rebuilt within a certain amount of time, or there's not a certain amount left, can it go back? Or do we have the provision now to leave it as a single family?
Right now, single-family dwellings are permitted uses.
In the office district, so they can rebuild, okay.
I, I think by, my thought would be if we narrow this down to just the Main Street, I think we're just opening up an alley to then expand the C B D right down Bandai. And is that something we want to open up that door for? Because you're taking the residential out of it, and you're making that a separate district.
Well, we've also got to understand, too, that if these people that are living in these residences right now want to turn these into an office, you can't tell them no.
No.
You can't tell them no.
I agree with you, and I, and I.
Yeah.
I, I don't know that, I don't think they should be offices, okay? I.
Right, but it's, it's, how do we, how do you just take out those few and?
There's more than a few there.
I guess, if, if we define a mixed-use district, within that mixed use, can then those properties be R one in business, or is it all just mixed-use zoning?
They would be in that mixed-use district.
It's a permitted use there.
It's a permitted use there. Someone who owns one of those properties, if for whatever reason they would prefer to be R M, they probably could, and if, if it was operating as a, as a, as a residential, residential property, it could be granted R M.
Because of the joints.
Because it's a budding.
So like, say, for instance, alright, and I'll show you this map. So this number forty-nine right here?
Yeah.
So if number forty-nine came into us and said, I want to be R M.
Forty-nine is currently.
Forty-nine is currently has a P R E, and it's a single-family residential.
Really?
But there's also a good-sized parcel at the rear. They could come in and ask to be rezoned to R M.
Depending on the situation and what's going on and all the details.
Mm-hmm. Because this one right here is, is multifamily.
Which one?
Number forty-nine is the one that could come in and ask to be R M.
Yeah.
Number forty-seven.
It's part, that's, that's literally Apple Valley's driveway.
Mm-hmm.
Forty-nine.
No, 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 no.
No, forty-seven.
Forty-seven. Forty-nine was that Orland's house?
No, forty-seven is Apple Valley's driveway.
Forty-nine, was that, that's Orland's old house, correct?
I think so, yes.
Right, and that has a P R E on it, but if they wanted to come in and ask to be R M, they could. They could request that.
I think anyone there can regardless of what we do.
Oh, sure. They could, but they'd have to have something, you know.
My house used to be. I think there used to be five units in there at one point.
I don't know that there's any need to change any of the zoning on it. I feel like as long as the single family is allowed there, I don't think that's a problem. I mean, we've got to understand, too, that, like with number, number eight, and number ten, and number one, and number two, if they want to operate a business there, they can operate a business there.
Anyone here can, right?
Mm-hmm, right, anybody in there can.
Business that is within.
Conform or within, right, right, right. Or when conforms with what we amended to.
Or do we just stay status quo and not touch any of them?
I think we need, I think we need to update things.
And the subcommittee specifically felt that there were a number of uses that should have been added as permitted uses in the mixed-use district.
Yep.
You guys had that.
You, you wanted to report. That was our report.
I don't, do, but do you have that typed out? Can you guys send that to us so we could review?
Yeah, I mean, I can type it out. I mean, it's, 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 you know, we didn't want, we didn't want the hours limited simply because, like, Dairy Queen's hours aren't limited.
Right.
You know, you can't really, that would not be.
But then doesn't that conflict with your parking ordinance where shared parking, as long as hours of operation, don't overlap?
Like I said, the, the, this is, this is a different, this is a different section. I'm just commenting on the fact that we have this right now.
Yeah, so we would have to then adopt something separate for that.
Well, we would have to, there would be parking that would be applicable to if.
Right, and it's up to the business. I guess you don't want to necessarily cap anyone for a specific business.
We didn't feel it was appropriate to attempt to limit what's a reasonable.
So.
Right, right.
If someone wants to run a tea shop, and they, or if they're going to run a china shop or a bookshop, they're going to work on Sundays. Simple.
I can respect that.
The D D A has, has had a series of.
Dairy Queen is grandfathered in, but then again, we are allowing business in a residential area, and you have to think about the residency you're allowing to be there as.
But the residents are buying in knowing they're on Main Street, which is M fifty-three.
Until we change what is currently happening.
We're not, we're not really changing, when you look at it, we're not changing a whole lot at all. We're not, I mean, we're, we're not changing that much. We're allowing a few things that are allowed in the C B D to be allowed in the office district. I mean, they've been.
The mixed-use district.
Mixed use, yeah, mixed-use district. There are things that have, like Bill said, that have been there before.
And they were successful businesses.
They were successful businesses then, and.
Yeah, I can, I can respect, I can respect that. Being there now, right, and I bought in knowing what was there and knowing what was it. I think moving forward, some things need to be looked at stricter within that area, especially that we are allowing the R one, or the residential in there. Lighting, I'm next to the bank, the lighting. I, I don't need to turn a light on in my house at night.
But.
I'm just saying, I, I think we need to define that if we're going to allow hours of operation to not be limited, I think we need to address issues like that moving forward for new businesses coming in adjoining our, our one or adjoining residential properties.
What hours do you think would be appropriate?
And I'm just, if we're not, if we're not going to limit the hours, then we have to address things like lighting, sound, smells, and all that. We need to address that and make sure they're enforced.
Right, and that's all within the provisions of the site plan. You know, you address lighting, you address sound, you address, you address berms, you address screening, you address all of those.
If it's already there, it wasn't done. And I got no problem with the bank. I, I bank there. Oh, thank you. But I'm just saying, I can deal with it, but if we're going to, we just have to make sure that this stuff is, is addressed and spelled out. For changing the uses, we're changing the zoning, or the, what we're calling the district, we need to define. what we're calling the district, we need to define it. I'm not opposed to a, a china shop or stuff like that. I'm not. I'm saying, I think we just need to, if we're going to allow the residential, we need to respect that aspect of those people that are living there twenty-four seven, three sixty-five, not shutting up shopping, going home at the end of the night.
But the reality is, is that there's five or eight of all of those properties
Currently.
Currently are actually owner-occupied or a claim of owner-occupied. And the, the rest of them are in fact, uh
On the Main Street.
They're on Main Street, and they're, they're held by people for investment purposes and/or, um
I, I understand the, the owner-occupied, but then I, I do, you do have to look at the people that are living there in a, a multi-family or a flat, and their residents that are living here next to businesses, knowing that they came in, but we got to look at, we're allowing to come in next to those people. And like I said, I'm not saying I'm against anything, but
When, when they move their stuff in, Justin, they can tell that there's a Dairy Queen next door.
I, I know that.
And, and
But are you going to, are we going to allow another Dairy Queen or another?
No.
No.
That's what I'm saying.
No.
Yeah, I, I haven't seen your guys' report or your list of businesses.
It's very, it's very limited. It's like bookstores, boutique shops, antiques, art supplies, galleries, gift shops, um
Sewing, I remember that.
Sewing, alterations, and I believe the other thing, and we said, we said like dance type of, dance type of schools with, you know, things like that.
Yeah.
Is what we said. So they're going to be very, they're going to be very limited.
Uh, if they start bouncing on the floor, it's a place of collapse. Don't worry about it.
Yeah, I mean, and you have to think about too.
I don't know why.
I mean, if you're permit, I mean, if, if you're running a, a dance school, you have to have some room, you know, and there's not, I mean, there's some good-sized places down there, but when I look at this list, like knowing what I looked at today, I see that there's, so say for instance, in the block between Pleasant and the Dairy Queen.
Might work. Cut off here.
So it's twelve, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, and seventeen?
Yep.
Number twelve is a single-family residence?
Yes.
Number fourteen is a single-family resident? Everything else is a rental?
Uh
Or a business?
What's fifteen?
Fifteen is, fifteen is a rental. Fifteen does not have a PRE on it.
Okay.
Does not have a PRE on it. And if they, if there's somebody living there and they didn't fire up a PRE, they're paying way too much in taxes.
I'm pretty sure it's fifteen. I'll go, I'll go mention something.
By the way.
But, I mean, like, number thirteen, I don't believe anybody lives in that house. If you know which one I'm talking about.
Yeah.
I don't believe anybody lives in that house.
I don't think so.
No.
No.
They have lots of yard sales.
Yeah.
Um, number eleven, nobody lives, does not have a PRE on it.
Eleven is
The big one on the corner.
It's a Willow something or that.
Oh, that's the bed and breakfast, right?
Mm-hmm. There's, yeah, nobody lives there.
Yeah.
There's, there's, it does not have a PRE on it.
It's got a counseling service sign.
Does it?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yep.
So do you want to type up something for us to answer?
Have a report in minutes.
I'm not typing minutes.
I'm, I'm, I'm pretty positive at the administrative level, if there was a subcommittee meeting, they want minutes. I know because I've been asked for
Out of a workshop?
Any subcommittee meeting, they want, they want minutes.
You don't have minutes, right?
I didn't type any, no.
Boom, 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 and, yeah, if we can just get the list of what you guys are recommending.
We can arrange that.
Yeah.
I don't, I don't think this is
I'm not doing it this weekend.
This weekend.
I expected you to do it on Sunday, please.
No.
No, no, that's fine. Just, even if it's in our next packet for review.
Then we would invite anybody who has suggestions to forward them to Lisa, because everybody has their own ideas. I mean, you, you've, you've been given a list of what's in the CBD. If you, or if you think it belongs in this office mixed-use district, let's forward it to Lisa so she can get everybody's comments there, and, and we won't have to spend another evening talking about it.
Are you suggest, are you going to enumerate every business that's allowed?
Currently and in addition.
Jim, there's, if you, if, if in the central business district, you're saying, well, we want to have tailoring shops.
Right.
Well, we're saying, that probably belongs in the mixed-use, because that's where it's been before. And we're saying bookshops are of, the, all of these things are enumerated as central business district, and we're saying they should be allowed in this mixed-use district. That was one of our charges, is, is what do we think should happen here? And so
Well, what I'm asking is, is I see a list of permitted businesses.
Sure, and we may have a list like that.
But, you know, I mean, are you putting too fine a point on it, that other people, let the entrepreneur decide, you know?
Well, no, I disagree with you on, I agree and I disagree, because what you're doing, if, when you say, or similar establishments, you're then leaving it up as an administrative decision that we're, we're trying to make certain in that, that it's not just someone's else's women volition. So we're, we're trying to put this out there on everything that we could think of that would probably fit there easily. I could see a computer repair shop there.
Do you have input?
Um, I just want to say, so in your permitted use section, it does have the other similar uses to those listed in this section.
We, we knew that.
I, but I'm just saying, can I just make comment? As a planner, I find that, um, language like that is great in special land use, because then you get to review it. None of that language is in the special land use section. So should we maybe, if, consider moving it, because then the entrepreneur can decide, but it still goes to planning commission review, and, you know.
We were deliberate and deliberative in expanding the number of named professions, businesses, services, and we were trying to remove it deliberately and deliberatively to, no, we intend that you be able to do this here.
Right.
Rather than leaving it up to somebody else's judgment. I, I agree about the, and other similar, okay, it's, that's still providing some administrative judgment, but in, in terms of what Jim was saying, yeah, we were, we were deliberative and deliberate in stating that we should expand this list of businesses, and if it runs an arm-length long, so what?
Well, my, actually, what I'm saying is, can you think of, are you able to think of everything?
No.
You know, so there's got to be some flexibility built into it somehow.
And there're businesses that are going to happen that we don't even know that are going to be out there, okay?
I think, I think that's where, what Karen is stating with the special land use, leaving that statement there, it still has to come back for planning approval.
Okay, we, we just felt that you should put these things in there, because we very much intend
Yeah, those, those things, but not eliminate the wording.
No, that, I, I specifically agree with you on that. I'm just, we're, we're beating this to death.
I think we're all, we're all on the same page, saying different things.
So you were just saying, like, number ten, that's under, um, other similar uses? Number ten would just get moved to special land use? Is that what you're saying?
That's what I would suggest, because then, and in permitted uses, you can expand to allow, you know, the antiques, bookshops, gallery, um, it's permitted, so there's less administrative procedure, less administrative review, less subjectiveness to it. Where special land use, if, you know, someone has whatever the next new businesses that we don't anticipate but could fit there, you know, we can have a more, a better review from the planning commission, a more thorough review than it would be just a permitted use.
And that's the reason we wanted to bring and start enumerating the things that we thought should be here that weren't.
Yep.
Yep.
We wanted to take it out of the administrative review basis and say, no, no, we intend for it to be here.
Yeah. We're on the same page.
Okay, I'm going to ask for unanimous approval
First thing.
To adjourn this meeting. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, that's it.